Ms. Fernandez. Mr. Shabano.
Here, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic, always stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll move to public participation. Mr. Segala?
Hello, everyone. Just opened up my notes here. Okay, so I wanted to start off with the Unified High School. I don't know if some of you are aware, but next month, October 8th, the Pawtucket Historic District Commission will be holding a vote to decide whether or not they will be imposing a six-month delay in demolition to explore alternatives. So just want to know what the plans are going to be for the school? If we're moving forward with the plan? And if not, what are we going to do with Shay and Toman students? I think it's important that we start talking about that now in case, you know, they do decide to do the delay, how that's going to affect the funding, what's going to go, what's going to happen? What are the plans for Shay? I've heard that Ride will not allow Shay to be renovated. So what's going to happen to all those students? I think that that's a pressing problem that we should all be addressing. I also want to talk about the primaries. I know it was talked about before, but, you know, I witnessed myself. I seen teachers handing out flyers, not really knowing what's going on, why certain members were excluded from those flyers and targeted. They didn't know who those members were. They didn't know anything about them, yet they were handing out flyers to people, telling them how to vote. I think this is totally unacceptable. Attack mailers attacking specific members who are dedicated members, who are doing their job and who are knowledgeable about these issues, who now will not be a part of the committee starting next year, which I think is a shame. And I think teachers weren't informed of these individuals and weren't given the full information, and voters weren't given the full information. And it was really misleading. And I also want to talk, I would like the members that will be continuing next year to denounce these practices, because I think that's just an important thing to do, to tell people that it's unacceptable. And I'm sure you guys all want to win on your own merit and not be grouped together and flyers or and attack mailers. You, not accusing any of you of being a part of that. It was all outside sources. A lot of us don't know who sent them, which is also a problem. But I think denouncing it would help put some more legitimacy to this race. And maybe you guys should consider a debate. I know there's some other members that have already said they'd be interested, but I think that's a good way to show the people what you guys are all about as individuals and inform the public of your viewpoints and your qualifications for the job. Also, we've heard that some of us are aware of the mayor's plan to make this an appointed board. And I would also like everybody to reject that as well and to publicly come out and say that if that were to come up, that you would soundly reject that. The voters deserve to vote for members of school committee, especially parents. They deserve to have a voice. They shouldn't be appointed, appointed board. There's other boards that are appointed by the mayor, and no mayor should have power to just make the decisions to control another branch of government, of city government, you know, separate but equal on the national level, but it's also at a local level. You guys all play your part. You're all elected officials, and you all deserve to stay, stay that way. I think that's all. Side note, the last meeting, there was an AP student that came up, and I wanted to talk about that too, because I was in AP classes. So she was saying the class, class sizes are too short. I remember when I was in high school that we did have a seven, you get all seven classes in one day, and that's just brutal. It's tough. I mean, you're trying to learn, especially if you're in advanced classes. You can't get as much information as you need in 45 minutes or whatever amount is. So, and I also want to talk about AP classes specifically. I took an AP class in the 11th grade, and the expectations weren't to pass. They kind of just like, well, I mean, if you guys get a two, that's good, because we didn't have enough preparation like other districts. And I don't know if this has changed, because I was in high, I graduated seven years ago. So I don't know, I'm not going to make an assumption. Maybe some of you can inform me if it's changed. But other districts start AP courses, at least getting kids ready for AP courses in like middle school. So that way, by the time they're in 11th grade and taking these, these courses, they're prepared, they're, you know, have got enough knowledge of the course to actually pass, to get a three or a four or even a five on these tests. And that way, they can get college credits for that. So I don't know how we can go about changing that policy and maybe introducing these classes to middle school to get, start getting kids prepared. Because, you know, a lot of kids deserve, deserve that. They don't deserve to just kind of be plopped with an AP class in 11th grade, 11th grade and say, oh, well, we can try to teach you as much as we can, and especially with 45-minute classes. That's tough. That is tough. Teachers don't have enough time to prep, to get enough information in their heads about these courses. So I think that's maybe something that if you guys can discuss how you can implement that. Of course, I don't, this, this school year is set in motion. You guys can't really do much, but maybe for next school year, we can start exploring some of those ideas, because I think they deserve more. And, you know, in general, test scores have been on the decline. I don't know what these past tests, for the last year, test scores are, the graduation rates. I know in 22, 23 school year, the dropout rate was pretty high. And graduation rates were pretty low. So maybe exploring some ideas of how we can get those up. And maybe exploring different ideas, maybe getting away from test scores too, because other countries around the world and other counties in the country are kind of moving away from test scores. And not every child should be valued or should be tested on these scores. That's not who they are. These test scores aren't, there doesn't, it's not a good gauge of their intelligence or what their capabilities are. And we should start working towards work programs too for high schoolers, get them connected. I've heard there are some programs going on, which is great, but expanding that to all different types of career in the trades. A lot of kids aren't college-bound. I know my parents weren't. I could have been, but, you know, the affordability of it was tough. And that's a lot of, that's for a lot of kids too. And scholarships don't cover much, and you're stuck with student loan debt, and not everybody wants to go through that path. So I think we need to start exploring some more options for those kids as well. That's all I have to say. I'd be willing to, I have more ideas too, if any of you want to reach out, and maybe we can collaborate on some ideas. I'm passionate about this. Some of you know I ran for a higher position in the city, but school is important to me. Teachers really changed my life for the better. I struggled at home, so school is a safe place for me, and a lot of kids value it. So we want to make sure we're always putting them at the top of the priority list. Teachers keep doing what you're doing, because you're all doing a great job. You don't get paid enough to do what you do, but you do it every day, and, you know, you're making a difference. And I want to shout out all the teachers I've ever had that really mentored me, encouraged me, you know, made me feel like I was worth something when my parents didn't. It means a lot. And for all of you that are doing that, keep doing it, please, because you're going to save kids' lives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Segala. Ms. Bento?
Good evening. I'm actually gonna start off by recapping something that happened the last meeting. Unfortunately, you guys have your public input in the beginning. So it always sounds like we're the crazy ones that always bring it back. But we have to, because things happen during the prior meetings that we can't address. So I'm going to say, the same way that you guys can't answer my questions or concerns when I bring them to this podium, I don't want any of you addressing me while I'm sitting over there. So we do have one committee member that has done it twice already. I've sent out emails to all of you to contain your member, but it just seems like this committee has no standards or there's no, like, control. People can just do whatever they want and disrespect us taxpayers, voters, parents, community advocates when we come here as much as they want and get away with it. I'm not going to point anybody out, but the last time that you guys had a meeting, Benolo said something to me while she was speaking, and my name was called as if I did something. And I'm going to say, knock it off. Because at the end of the day, we're not going to make the people at home watching and the audience think that I did something out of line. Check your own people, please. Because I'm not going to sit there and allow any disrespect. I don't care what your titles are, basically. I think you guys know that by now. I am speaking today to people that might be watching. I have got a lot of people approach me in the last few months, and I've told them if they don't want to come down, because they feel like a lot of disrespect happens in this room, so they don't want to come here. So I've asked some of them to watch, because some of them keep calling me, texting me, emailing me, asking me, why are the concerns of the community not being addressed? I really don't have an answer for them. So I want them to know that I am bringing the concerns to this podium. But I don't know why it is that I'm ignored. Maybe it's because you guys are tired of seeing the same person saying it. Maybe it's the mayor's motto, don't give Bento any satisfaction of being right. I don't know what it is. All I know is that the voters are voting you guys in, trusting you to make decisions for the children. But at the end of the day, you guys are not making decisions for children. You're not. The school administration is trying their best to balance out what goes on in this city for the children, especially the ones that look like me. But I feel like at this point, everybody in this room is more about the adults than they are about the children. And I'm going to tell you why. The adults always get their way. Some of you adults just want to sit here and act like children and ask the most dumbest questions and waste our time, because I don't get paid to be here. But almost all of you do, right? So we've got to sit here and listen to these petty questions being asked by some of you, wasting our time. Last meeting, someone took a whole 25 minutes discussing stuff that they probably know nothing about. And you want us to sit here patiently and listen to what you guys have to say, but then whatever we're saying is going in your one ear and right out the other. Like, nothing is being addressed. I addressed Ms. Rabbit last time that we were here, right? Thinking, okay, the parents wanted me to address something that happened in the school department, so I did. But what has been done about that since the last time I brought it up? Nothing. Was it put on the agenda? No. Did Ms. Rabbit reach out to me to let me know the answer to my question? No. So nothing really gets addressed by anybody when it's an adult. And we're supposed to trust you with our children. It's getting scarier and scarier by the day, guys. And like I said the last time that I spoke too, I spoke to a whole bunch of teachers the day of the election that was passing out these flyers suggesting who we should vote on. And all of them said the same thing. We need someone that's going to stand up for us. I asked the last meeting, there was a whole bunch of blue shirts here last meeting, whole bunch of teachers. Not one has bothered to answer my question as to who it is that they need people to stand up to. I'm still looking for answers to questions. Parents are getting a little bit concerned, and all you guys care about is, oh, helping to hush, hush what one of you are doing. Let me walk into a building, again, I'm going to keep on bringing this up every meeting like I promised, because I've also emailed you guys, and no one's answering me. We don't get answers to anything. Let me walk up into a building with just, with just the tone that I have right now, which is a normal tone for me. And someone's going to call the cops, because there's an irate parent in the building. But let it be some, someone that looks like them walking into a building, acting crazy, making people cry, and scaring the bejesus out of children and families, and it's all hush, hush. Want to know why? Here's why. I'm going to tell you, I'm going to piss off a lot of people today, but I really don't care. Because I get disrespected every time I come, I come here. When I waste my time coming here, speaking for the community, and nothing gets done, now you guys are going to hear me out. Every time I hear, but why it's gotta be a color thing, Bento? Guess what? The complainers all have in common. It's always a white person asking me that. That's weird. Just like when one of your own walks up into a building acting crazy, and it goes hush, hush, and everybody stays silent because you condone what she's doing? My people are staying quiet, because they're okay with what I'm saying. It is a color thing. When the mayor can have an interview, and he says it himself, that this city gets a whole bunch of extra funding because of its diversity. So you mean to tell me, my brown children and my black children are bringing in all kinds of extra funding for the school, yet we're still arguing about getting translators and stuff? You know what I'm starting to see? You know what I'm starting to think? I'm going to make my last point here. Yep, I'm going to piss off a lot of people. I don't hate teachers. But when every single teacher, including the union president over here, is convincing each other that they're at war with somebody, but nobody has an answer as to who they're at war with? I think I've come to my own conclusion. That's what they leave it up to. Let me decide what I think it is. You know what I think it is? I think that we have majority white teachers pissed the hell off that now we have a superintendent and a staff that's probably going to look out for our children that look like us, and y'all getting scared. Who's going to tell me I'm wrong? Nobody. Because that's probably what it is. Our children are probably finally about to get some type of balance in this city, and all the white people are getting scared. Bento, stop talking about the color thing. It is a color thing. I mention it because you guys make it a color thing. Why is it? Why is everybody being hush, hush about what, oh, two white committee members did out of line this whole damn month? That affects my community. And I come here as a brown community leader, and I'm speaking on it, and I want anybody watching to see that I'm speaking on it. It just gets ignored, because I'm saying it. But if one white person says it, oh, it becomes a problem. That's the problem with the city. Forget the messenger, I'm always the one saying everything, because I got the balls to do it. Nobody else is going to come down here and be disrespected and ignored. I come here every single time to get disrespected and ignored and called out by this one over here. It's not going to happen no more. I'm not putting up with this crap no more. If it's not a color thing, say what it is. What is it then? None of you guys can answer that. So what is a color thing? And I want to keep on pointing it out until y'all fix it.
Thank you, Ms. Bento. All right, we'll move to presentation. Superintendent's 2023, 2024 Year in Review.
Good evening. Trying to keep on, hold on to my voice. So today, I just wanted to provide what I call the Year Review, to reflect over the last year, to bring closure to my first year as the proud superintendent of Pawtucket School Department, and to share some positive highlights, because we would be here all night if I shared every positive thing that has happened in our schools. And today, I had a wonderful opportunity of walking with two committee members today to visit two schools, Ms. Benolo and Ms. Fernandez, and it was an awesome visit to two of our schools in the district today. And again, I said I would be here all night, so I'm just going to try to focus on some few highlights for the past school year. I plan to, during the next committee meeting, is pull up, we're going to present some things that our goal, my goal, which is our strategic plan, our district-wide strategic plan that ends in 2026. You can also view that at our Ride website, where it's located. And it is definitely a living document for our school district. And our schools have to create individualized school improvement plans to align to our district-wide strategic plan, and that's how we move our district to the next level. So that's our next agenda meeting. I just wanted to share some accomplishment of this past school year. Without further ado, let's begin. And thanks to Ariel for making the nice transitions for me. I thank you, appreciate that, Ariel, of your viewing. But I think it's important to always start with our vision and mission for our district, because when you share your vision and mission statement, this is how we define our purpose and how we plan to achieve our goals district-wide. So our vision, which when I got here a year ago, pretty much I just tweaked just a couple of things, it's pretty much the same vision and mission when I came. So this is truly the Pawtucket School Department's values and goals and beliefs. So the vision was provide educational excellence and global citizenship for all, together, every student, every day. And our mission is Pawtucket Schools provide high-quality, engaging, and rigorous academic opportunities continuously by fostering culturally competent and equitable learning environments for all students and families within our community. So as you see, our vision and mission played an intricate part in when we wrote our strategic, strategic plan for our school year this year. Again, Year in Review. So I kicked off our school year with, where we started with our successful teacher contract negotiation with the Teacher Alliance President and team in the school committee. We came to the conclusion that all of our teachers will receive 3% raises across the board for three years, and I thought that was an awesome way to kick off our school year. As far as academic progress, we increased our graduation rate from 69% to 72%. That is awesome, awesome, awesome. And we are now on the positive trajectory to increasing our graduation rates. We are incredibly proud of all the hard work and achievements of our students and our educators. And also, just to let you know, we will have this posted up afterwards, like a mini video on the school district website, so you're more than welcome to view it afterwards. We have also increased our SAT reading scores. I know for sure at Shay High School, where we went from 12% to 18% proficient on the SAT. So, woo, Shay High School. Come on, give it up! Don't be shy, that's right. That's a lot of work, give it up! And math also increased from 3.3% to 5.2% this past school year. So as you see, we're moving in the right direction. We have additional information on the other schools when the Ride test scores come in from middle and elementary schools. And we'll probably did a little, I'll dig a little bit deeper during our next committee meeting. We also developed learning walks and data chats this past year to brainstorm and serve as thought partners to collaborate on how to improve student learning outcomes and professional learning, which included leaders, teachers, and district staff. So we got in the room, collaborated, and served as each other's thought partners. Next, attendance. So we decreased our chronic absenteeism by 3% across the district. I'm about to hold up a sign and say clap. But that took a lot of work, trust me, in that we could not have accomplished that goal if it was not for our district, newly district-created attendance team that supports the attendance improvement, and our school-wide district attendance team, which includes the teachers, school administrators, and at times, sometimes our district personnel. So that took a true team effort to increase our students coming to class daily. Also, the district-wide attendance team created the Family Guide Book for all families, especially new families to our district, where they can find essential information. It is translated as well, and lives on our district website and is available to all stakeholders. The district-wide attendance team created a district-wide attendance protocol procedure for all schools to follow as well. So we implemented our school attendance awards this past school year as a part of the district attendance initiative to promote daily school attendance. So our leaders would get nice, big trophies, and they would train them off every month. We would take a picture and post, so that was a good initiative for our leaders in our schools. And kids would walk by and say, whoa, look at that trophy. Yeah, that's because you come into school every day. So, yes, definitely. We recently learned that the Cozy Adult Education Program will receive a $9,500 bonus from Ride for exceeding our targets for attendance and pre-post testing rates for our 23-24 academic school year. Awesome. Good, good, I need to have some music. Good feeling, all right. With our positive gains in attendance and academic progress, we are trending up during our very first school year and looking forward to this year. So this year, I also had an opportunity in order to increase communication and collaboration among some of our other stakeholders, like my students and parents. Last year, we implemented a student advisory committee, which included middle and high school students. We met once a month, so that I can include student voices in my planning and moving forward, and to simply get their input and feedback on what they feel is needed in our schools. We also put into action the monthly parent advisory committee to hear directly from our parents and get ideas and suggestions on how we can move forward with building relationships and how we can better meet our family needs. And we're going to also delve a little bit this year into some different activities to get more involved into the community and meet more families and teachers. Also, statewide recognition. Boy, did we rack up this past school year. The Rhode Island Association of School Principals, we had an element, we had our Elementary Principal of the Year, Bridget Boucher, Principal of Varya Elementary. This prestigious honor is a testament to Ms. Boucher's exceptional leadership, dedication, and unwavering commitment to educational excellence. Also, we had a Rhode Island CTE Career Technical Education Administrator of the Year, Rico Pimento, our Director of CTE. These are just a couple of examples, but we have many more, and would like to thank you all for the hard work that our educators put in every single day. Every day, we, the educators do great things in all of our buildings. Sports highlights. Boy, we were racking up on trophies this past year. So we had sports contributed, just remember, sports contribute significantly, significantly to the holistic development of our students. Participation in sports involves not only physical, but also mental and emotional aspects. Students learn to set goals, manage their time effectively, and develop discipline. Toman and Shay Boys Volleyball Co-op Team Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division III, they were the state champions. Yay! Shay and Toman. Also, Shay and Toma Cheerleading Co-op Team Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division I, they were champions. And then Toman, that's right. Toman High School Boys Basketball Team went to the division finals. They made it to the top. It's a little, but this year, we'll bring home the trophy. And then Shay and Toma Girls Basketball Co-op Team Rhode Island Interscholastic League Division II, they were the state champions for Division II this past year. So let's give it up. And again, we have to congratulate all of our athletes, and we are off to a great start. And congratulations to all athletes for starting this school year off very well. They're already hard at work. Partnerships to enhance our learning environments. In preparation of 24-25 school year, we partnered with various community organizations for our Back to School Backpack Giveaway. And for the first time, added a second site at Slater Middle School on the other side of the city, per our parent request. Having two backpack sites was essential in making sure we service all of our communities equally. The event was attended by Governor McKee, Senator Gabe Amo, to name a few, as we service approximately over 1,000 families throughout both sides, providing backpacks, supplies, and essential backpack, school supplies, backpacks, and et cetera, because they also had coloring books and some fun. schools, supplies, backpacks and et cetera, because they also had coloring books and some fun little trinkets to take home as well. Um, and the s- the families really enjoyed the event for that day. And the boys and girls, oh my God, if you saw their smiles that day, they were super duper excited to start their school year in Pawtucket. In addition, for the first time, we partnered with Brown University Tutoring Corporation this past year to improve our students' learning outcomes. We had approximately twenty-five Brown University students enrolled last year to provide extra support in the classrooms at Toman and Shea High School during and after school. This year, we are adding two more schools, this year two middle schools. Uh, the Brown Tutoring Program will also move into the middle school level, starting with Slater and moving right into golf this year. I think I look a little fat on that picture, but I'm gonna keep going. Okay, now workforce development this year. For the first time ever in Pawtucket, we forged a new partnership that was developed this past year with the General Dynamic Electric Boat to create a high school to career pipeline. Sixteen of our twenty-three students secured interviews and students were offered employment at Electric Boat after graduation. And Kim and I attended that evening. It was an awesome event. This program introduces our students into the workforce, particularly the trades of welding, electrical machinery and sheet metal, to name a few, which are highly paid positions and high demand jobs. So our students graduated, went and bought their car, their apartment, and they are living independently. So this year, we are adding additional students to the program. As we continue to enhance our CTE curriculum and programming, this past summer, students participated in the Medical Week Program at Brown Uni- University as part of our summer learning opportunities for students. We also initiated our Shea High School Food Truck, which has given our students an opportunity to enhance their culinary skills while increasing their entrepreneurship skills. We started renovating Shea's Commissary Kitchen last year to support the needs of CTE culinary students and the Shea Food Truck, which should be completed very soon, within the next week or two. So for leadership professional development trainings, for the first time, we implemented continuous professional development for our school leaders, our principals and our assistant principals across the district to enhance their leadership skills to better meet the needs of all stakeholders in their building. This year, our principals and assistant principals, for the first time, had the opportunity to meet together twice a month as a team to enhance their leadership skills. Our school leaders also had opportunity to attend professional development at various conferences across the nation outside of our district to network with other leaders from across other sides of different districts and bring back that new learning to our district to enhance our learning environment. Teachers also engaged in ongoing professional development with an immense focus on social emotional learning this past year. We also introduced the Spanish for Educators Training and that was a huge success. So thank you Melissa Labossier. Um, also, yes. Also implemented the following trainings as well, as well, just to name a few. Cultural responsiveness, teaching in the brain, significant seventy-two social emotional learning, Kagan Cooperative Structure Learning, mental health, and also some ASD training. So our teachers been very busy. This past year, Central Office District Teams and School Teams, which includes leaders, teachers and support staff, came together to collaborate, improve daily practices, enhance the learning of all to create a learning environment where all students can reach their fullest potential by creating this leadership development practice through learning walks and school data chats. And we'll continue that this year as well. Facilities, can't, hey, we've been doing a lot of big things in facilities, but I can't leave that out. So this past year, Baldwin, two weeks ago, I had opportunity to walk uh the campus at Baldwin. It is a beautiful, world-class, twenty-first century learning facility. It is definitely on schedule. Windows are currently going up this week. So we're super duper excited about that. Yes. Also, the Unified High School, uh, we're on our way with that as well. Various stakeholders have been actively involved. We have ongoing meetings for the revisions of the Unified High Schools, High School, as well as small communities and CTE programming. So a lot of the information is all right now focused on the instructional piece of building our high school. So there will be sixteen small learning communities. There are different learning pods throughout the schools that have different flexible spacing. For example, classroom space may be also a science lab. It may also be a shared common space. We also have teacher-working space, et cetera. So within each small learning community, you will have those various spaces. We are also planning on creating adult learning opportunities by creating adult learning spaces for the community. So for example, for um, for um, what is it called? Mechanics? When they fix cars, our community can bring your cars to our school, get your cars fixed, pay our students for the work that they so well have performed on your cars. So also just some other activities that we're planning, it will also be open to the community as well because we really want our community to be a part of our new Unified High School. Yes. Also, Colliers and DLR Group were presenting in October, next school committee meeting. Um, there are different phases of for all stakeholders to take part, take part in this process. So all stakeholders will have an opportunity to participate throughout the different phases as we build our Unified High School. Last but not least, we also added gender-neutral ADA bathrooms to some of our schools. And um as well last year, when I had a chance to visit, they are beautiful. So thank you um Kim for kicking that initiative off uh for our students, but they were beautiful. So we really appreciate that. So I just want to take this opportunity to say that we are definitely off to a great school year this year. We opened up a new program, Pawtucket Hope Academy, uh, to service our high-needs students this year. Last year, I was able to secure funding to ensure every school has an assistant principal and social worker. We are also in the process of hiring additional guidance counselors to focus on our MLL population at every level for the first time in our district. So we have guidance counselors at elementary, middle and high school. We've also secured funding for behavior techs to help um our teachers and our leaders. So we have some, we hired, we're continuing to hire behavior techs to support our students' behavior in many of our schools. And during next month's community meeting, we'll be going over district-wide strategic plan and goals for this upcoming school year. So this is our year review. I want to thank you all for all of your support, especially my committee members, my chairman. Mr. Shabano, thank you. Um, I could not have accomplished this without, without all the stakeholders. So please make sure you go to our website, our social media page, where we have been trying to be very reflective, share as much as we can about all the wonderful things that are going on in our district. Thank you to our teachers for all your hard work and your dedication. Thank you to our leaders, our support staff. Um, even our, our, our custodial staff, my central office staff, leadership could not have gotten here this far. So we will continue to work together, do this, take our district to the next level together, every student, every day. Thank you.
Any questions, comments? All right, nicely done. Thank you. We'll move to uh full business discussion action items. I'll entertain a motion to remove from the table the Empowerment Factory MOU PSD Fallon Elementary School. Motion, motion made to remove from the table the Empowerment Factory MOU by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Grant and Ms. Doobie. Any discussion on removing it from the table? Roll call on the removal, please.
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Shalow. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Shabano.
Yes. All right. Now I'll go to full business discussion action item, the Empowerment Factory MOU. At this point, I'd entertain a motion to approve it. Dr. Tate?
I apologize. You're good.
Motion to approve the Empowerment Factory MOU with Fallon Ele- Elementary School by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Ms. Doobie and Mr. Shalow. Any discussion on that? I know everyone is well familiar with the Empowerment Factory and the, and the great work they do in the city. A roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Shalow. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Shabano.
Yes. All right. We'll go to uh new business discussion action, uh approval of the twenty-twenty-five school committee calendar. Motion to approve the calendar, the twenty-twenty-five school committee calendar by Ms. Grant, seconded by Ms. Benolo. Discussion on the calendar, Mr. Shalow.
How long have we done an organizational meeting um at a school committee? Because I don't remember doing that when I was on it a hundred years ago. Did we always have it? So we have to, I'm just saying, because we have to meet to say who's gonna be leadership and then leave. It was the fastest meeting I had, so I, I actually appreciated it. But do we have to have it by charter or is it just? I just wanted to roll it into the um, to the regular January meeting, if that was um field of the committee, but okay, never mind.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the twenty-twenty-five school committee calendar. It's been seconded. No further discussion. Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Shalow. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Shabano.
Yes. All right. Uh, approval of district-wide copier purchase. Copier, district-wide copier purchases. Motion to approve the district-wide copiers purchase using ESAR funds by Ms. Benolo. Is there a second?
We'd have to state, state who we're approving.
All right. Motion's been made to approve. It's been seconded. We're in discussion. Hello?
My, my name is Adam Oliver, and I'm the controller at Pawtucket School System. And we have a proposal from Hirsch Christina. And he went out for three bids. There was a need in the school for copiers. We were fortunate enough to have the copiers being funded by the ESAR grants. And he went out and got three bids. And they were basically on a, a shop copier. And a Konica Minolta. And the Rico. And after going through the three bids, he decided, he felt strongly that the shop copiers were, were the best. Unfortunately, and there was a significant difference in the amounts. Unfortunately, the first time I, my sheet, it had all the numbers on it. It's not here. But anyway, it was a significant nu- numbers. Just from memory, the shop copier, the color copier was like about four thousand. The Rico copier was in the range of nine or ten. So when we're looking. Yeah, and if you, if you look at the, the bids, there's a significant difference between the shop copier and the Rico. Surprisingly, a big difference. So I think he feels strongly about that and the numbers really support it.
Motion to amend uh to approve our Marconet.
Do we have to amend Ms. Benolo's motion or can? Oh, okay. She didn't uh identify the, got it. There's a motion on the floor to approve Marconet for the amount of three hundred and forty-eight thousand, six seventy-six, twenty-seven for the purchase of sixty, sixty-five copiers by Ms. Doobie, seconded by Ms. Benolo. Any discussion on that bid award? Ms. Grant.
So I also noticed that there was a big difference. So the difference was Marco. But Core and Bay were closer. And Marco was a lot less than both of them. So it concerns me about, you know, um, I know it was mentioned that these machines have been in the school department. Um, how well ha- do they do with their servicing? And because I know in our, in our schools, our teachers really depend on the copiers. So we want, you know, I, I know Marco itself isn't a local company. I, I, I kind of looked it up and just kind of checked it. I also noticed that its ratings were two point seven. Um, and I was a little surprised with that, which made me concerned about, you know, how quickly are they getting out here to take care of our copiers um in, in what that quality is?
I, I had a conversation with Hirsch about that, something very same thing. Um, and he stated that we have all three brands in our schools. And he has not seen a significant difference where he'll be like, no, don't go with that company because I've had a lot of problems out of that particular company. He said they're pretty much was far as maintenance-wise, over the years, they've all stood pretty solid. So he was okay with going with Marco. He said, I don't, I won't have any doubt that they will provide the same services. But that's why he's still firm on, let's just go with this company because we already have some, a lot of these copiers in our um schools. And we're purchasing sixty-five copy machines because the need is great. So all of our schools will be touched with new copiers. For example, he shared with me that Toman had only about three copiers for the whole school, which I thought was amazing versus uh Shea had about nine to ten. So he's gonna implement, bring their up, their numbers up to equal Shea's um copy machine and provide Shea with some of the new machines as well. So he really took his time looking at these quotes, uh, because I told him, I said, I really want quality copy machines in the building. Because like you said, teachers depend on the copy machines, definitely. So, yes, thank you.
Anyhow, Mr. Shaw.
I don't like I'm broken record or repeating exactly what uh committee member Grant just said, but I noticed the price difference too. You have one company well below and you have two kind of neck and neck. Are we positive? This is the best, because it's that old adage, you get the little bidder, you get what you pay for. This is ESAR money. We can't spend this any, like, if this, if these machines start going down next year or the year after, buyer's remorse is on us. These machines are in the district, um, from what everyone just said. You said all three copiers are in the Oh, really? All right. But, because I hear from teachers that our copy machines, uh, copy machines are always breaking down. Is this this model? I don't want to get into what, what model number we're purchasing, but do we know? Are we just purchasing the cheapest one at a chance of, let's buy an upper-class uh copy machine for a little bit more? This is ESAR money that won't be here anymore.
Um, when I spoke to Hirsch about that, I mean, he's my IT chief. I, I depend heavily on his expertise. I'm not a copy expert at all. So when he says, Ms. Roy, this is a good choice, trust me. We won't go wrong. We already have some of these copy machines in our schools currently. They're not like standing out as the ones that's breaking down the most or anything like that. So.
So many, I don't want to make it Pawtucket, you know, statewide, but look at, look at what's going on with, you know, statewide, the Washington Bridge, for example, lowest bidders. Look at, you know, I don't want to end up with a miniature disaster on our hand because this is again, ESAR money. And besides pencils, copy machines are teachers' uh favorite tools inside their tool belt. So I want to make sure that we get the best copy machine uh for the price that we can afford. So, okay, thank you.
Anything else on this? Ms. Grant?
In, I'm assuming we have an agreement with these companies too. Um, I don't know if either one of you, um, the superintendent or the controller know. Is, is there a time limit for them to be able to get out here and provide the service to the district? Is, is that one of our conditions? And if this doesn't happen, that will break contract, correct? Okay, so.
Yes.
That there, but they have to get out within a certain amount of time, correct?
Now that I don't know.
Because that's what it is.
But.
You know, I, because I, I worry that these copiers could be down. You know, this is a company that's, it's on the other side of the country. Um, so I, I worry about the servicing and making, I wanna make sure our contract has, you know, that they need to be out here.
The time agreement, the other thing is we're purchasing sixty-five copiers. We're gonna have a designate, there'll be somebody designated to make sure that we get the type of response that we, that we need.
Yeah, but we have seventeen schools, and we have a school department.
Yeah, but that's, that's a big con- contract for these people. So I wouldn't be surprised if they have, normally they'd have an assigned service person that would be on a regular call.
Okay, so do we know, that's what I guess of what I'm wondering, that's what I'm asking. Well, do we know, is it part of our, our plan that someone's gonna get out here within twenty-four hours? So we can get this built back up? That's what I'm, that's what.
I don't know.
I guess it's either yes or no.
Certain, but I would think Hersh would know, and that would be part of his criteria. Normally it would be. Normally it would be, that'd be standard. And the other thing with sixty, with, with sixteen schools and the number of schools and number of copiers, there would be service people dedicated to making sure that our copiers are up and running, because it's vital. They, we know it, and then, of course, they know it.
Right, but I guess what I'm asking, and you're not really answering it, do we know that? Do we know, do we know that we have with this company a technician who is going to take care of our copiers?
We may not have that clause, but we'll have the other clause that you're talking about, that within a certain period of time, they respond.
Thank you to Superintendent for explaining, I know Hersh couldn't be here at this meeting. Um, but as you said, the person who currently deals with the copiers says that he believes this company works as effectively as the other companies. We have all of these copiers in our buildings now. And he says this one works as effectively as the other ones. Um, so that is what I would wanna hear. I, I don't know about copiers. Um, so if, if somebody who, who the person we hired to oversee that says that they work well, then um, I'm glad that they're a little bitter, because it means that we will save some money um in the process of getting copiers.
Ms. Fernandez?
We were kinda similarly, are we, is there a time crunch to get this in? Because I wonder if maybe they could ask those questions to Hersh, who is the one, like, you know, Ms. Doobie said, if Hersh thinks that's, it's the right um copier. I mean, who am I, again, I'm, I don't know copiers.
To, to the extent of the, the timeline.
Yep.
Because they're ESAR funds and they expire, I believe. Monday. You know, I.
Again, I, yeah, I don't, I, I mean, I would like to trust, I, I think that we trust Hersh and his decision-making. Um, I mean, if we didn't, I don't think he'd be where he's, he's at. And so, I mean, again, I don't know copies, but if Hersh, Hersh is okay with it, then I, I'm gonna be okay with it, I mean, I don't.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. I'm just gonna check in with our clerk, who has conversations as we put the documents, as she puts the documents together with the packet. Do you have any insight into this, Ms. List?
From my own experience with having these copiers in our central office, specifically our area. Whenever we've had an issue and it's been very few and far between, we call and they immediately come to service the machine. So we haven't had any issues with repairs, um, obtaining supplies, any of that. We can either call a phone number or we can actually send um an email request for both repair and supplies. And they've always been, um, that they've always expedited those requests. So we've always had a service check right there as soon as we needed it, and we've also received the supplies in a timely manner, so.
Ms. Benolo.
So on page four, it talks about the Marco Support Desk, which is the recommended option. I would presume we're getting that, but it's live call answer Monday through Friday, eight to five. Um, set up the, set up the scan and email. Help with duplex printing, identification of solutions for device connection. Support with SHOP, HP, Linux, Konica, et cetera. Proficiency with both Windows and Mac, and coordination with IT staff members to resolve server issues. So that's part of the um program that we're, that we're paying for, part of the contract. So, you know, I think Paul and the rest of the IT staff have sufficient knowledge of our copy machines that they can work with the IT staff there to take care of it.
We'll approve the bid to Maconicat for sixty-five copiers, it's been seconded. Any other discussion? Roll call on the approval, please.
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Shalow. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Sharmano.
Yes. All right, and? Ms. Doobie?
Policy that we're bringing forward for amendment, it's our homeschool instruction policy. Um, this was um brought forward by uh, by the administration that oversees homeschool instruction that we actually don't have in our policy, that students need to provide current address, improve their residency. Um, so some do, but we actually don't have policy that says they have to. So we always do want to make sure that we know a student lives in Pawtucket and is applying for homeschooling in Pawtucket. Um, so uh that was added. And then we also just cleaned up some language, as we usually do, we open this to say superintendent or their designee. Um, and then, you know, changed up the language to, so there's only two changes really being made to say that the designee applies and also current address through residency.
IHM by Ms. Benolo, seconded by Mr. Shalow. Discussion on Ms. Benolo.
Just um, on the, yeah, on the page you're looking at, third lineup, it says his work. Can we change that to there, so it's consistent with what you've done above? Okay.
As Legalist said, any changes like that um can just be made in general, they don't have to be um run through policy, but I will, I will look for it, yes.
Okay.
Anything else? Roll call on the approval of the homeschool instruction first pass.
Ms. Benolo. Mr. Shalow. Ms. Doobie. Ms. Fernandez. Ms. Grant. Mr. Sharmano.
Yes. Motion adjourned by Ms. Grant, seconded by Ms. Benolo, any discussion, all those in favor? I oppose, motion carries, good night.